Keep them up.
I'm gonna bring this in here. Good morning, and thank you for attending our February 29th, 2024 meeting. It doesn't seem like it should be the end of February already, but it is. I want to ask Craig, would you pray for us?
Father, as always, we opened the meeting today by coming before you acknowledging that we need your presence here with us today. The wisdom that you give us so freely, the discernment that you give us, Father, we request it, we need it, we thank you for it. What I think these men, their willingness to come and to serve their community like this, to be certain leaders. I pray, Father, that you'll help them, that you'll encourage them, that they will find satisfaction in what they do in helping their fellow man. Father, that they will be encouraged by folks showing their appreciation to them. Father, I thank you for the men and women of law enforcement, emergency operations, our fire response guys. What I thank you for them, and for the service that they give our community, please protect them, bring them home to their families, in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Craig. I'm going to go ahead and call our planning commission to order. Before we get started, I've got a few people on my list here that are probably not here to speak under public comment, but I want to recognize them. Dave Wade with CMP DD, thank you, Dave. Gray Oops, CMP DD. And I think our county prosecutor's here somewhere. There he is, Trey Spillman, thank y'all for coming in. Alright. The first thing we have is public comments, and I think... Oh, I'm sorry. Let's look at our February 2024 minutes. And I need to know if anybody has anything to bring up, or do we want to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Brad makes a motion to approve, Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, now then, old business, do we have old business to talk about?
Good morning, there is no old business to discuss.
Alright, new considerations?
Alright, the first item under new considerations is a dimensional variance request for Ashley and Sean Allen at 504 St. Sel Cove. The property is located in Regatta subdivision, it's zoned R1B. The Allens added a roof extension over the existing patio without a permit. It was reported by the Regatta HOA. The required rear yard setback is 20 feet. At the closest point, it's 14 feet from the rear property line. So they're seeking a variance of 6 feet from the rear setback. So this is just an aerial view. It's a cul-de-sac lot, and it is a little oddly shaped. So this is their site plan. You can see the roof extension kind of outlined in yellow there. And so at the closest point, it measures 14 feet to the rear property line. These are pictures that were taken out there of the roof extension. This is a view of the front of the property. And these are pictures of surrounding properties. I'm not sure if anyone's here today or not.
Can you go back to the picture that's showing the addition? Don't want this to take so much past that original roof.
So it was just a patio, it was just a patio, and they extended it to cover the patio. They also poured some additional concrete, but the, I guess, the roof structure itself stops with the house. It lines up with the house.
So the concrete is what?
No, you measure the setback from the closest vertical member, which is the post, to the property line. So it comes out as 14.
If it wasn't this oddly shaped lot, if it was a rectangle or square, it probably wouldn't have been an issue, but...
Yeah, I went out there and looked at it, and it follows the natural roof line, front and side. But it's definitely an oddly shaped lot. Even, I met with Sean, he even told me that the neighbor was hoping that he could move his, the neighbor could move his own fence to try to help get that 6 feet. And not do that, but he was trying. They're all good neighbors, and the way I understand it, so...
Alright, do we have a complaint? Is there someone here that...
Well, the HOA, you know, they submitted something to the HOA for an approval. And so the HOA initially turned him down. But then they didn't come for a permit, they noticed they had started construction. And so they called and told us. And he's since gotten a letter from the HOA saying they're okay with it, so...
Alright.
Mr. Renee, what was the permit amount?
It'd be based on the cost, whatever the cost of work is.
Small, small amount, would you say?
Brian probably can give you an estimate of what he thinks, I'm not really...
I think they were around, like you said, around 15, 20.
Typically, we will double the permit fee where they fail to get the permit ahead of time. That's a penalty that they pay. So I would assume that's what we're going to do here, is that right?
That's cool.
Okay. Yep. I don't see any issues with it, but I don't think we're proud of setting that arm, are we?
Yes, please.
Next action, Ms. Brenner.
Alright, Scott makes a motion to set it. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Counting seconds, any other discussion?
Yeah, do we have to do a public hearing? Can we not just go ahead and grant the variance today?
No, sir, we, we got to.
We gotta have it here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm really surprised we even charged a permit, somebody put a patio up.
I cover, we do.
Okay.
We do porches, decks.
Alright. Decks also?
We have for years.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Jay, I advise you to not ask any further questions.
Yeah, no doubt.
Motion passes.
I won't, I won't. I'm sorry, my mouth hurts.
Alright, next, on the public hearings.
Okay, so that was all of the public, the setting of the public hearings. The next thing is the site plan architectural review. And Chase Wolverton, Efficient Power and Light. This is a continuation of that site plan architectural review at 105 Avalon Court. Mr. Wolverton purchased the Ride South building in Avalon Center and these three lots. The property is on C2. That's an aerial view of that property, you can see the existing Ride South building. That's just a close-up of the property. And then this is his site plan. He's proposing a 6,000 square foot addition to the back of the building for warehouse space. The addition will have architectural, vertical seam metal wall panels. The panels will be gray in color to match the roof of the existing building. He's adding a concrete parking lot for the warehouse and a crushed stone parking area on the back lot for service truck parking. He's going to install a vegetative screen along the west property line of the lots. This is his floor plan, just a storage area again. And then these are the elevations. We haven't received the drainage plan, so if it's approved, we need to make a contingent upon approval of the drainage plan review. And then this is the Ride South building. Mr. Wolverton is here today, he brought materials to show you what that would look like. But it'll be gray to match the roof of the existing building. These are surrounding properties.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for the opportunity. As Ms. Renee mentioned, I'm kind of electrical contracting business. Bought this building back in December, and with the intention of adding warehouse space to it for inventory for the business and equipment. This is the front of the building, it's very aesthetically pleasing to me, which is the reason that I bought it and the location that it's in. And my desire is to build a warehouse that complements the existing building. And I brought some metal wall samples here today, which is, my intention is to build it with metal wall facade, if you guys will grant that. Two different options for you to choose from that makes no real difference to me, please.
Sure, yeah, come on.
This one is the first. The difference between those two, the one Mr. Calhoun is holding is a exposed fastener metal panel. The one Mr. Scarborough is holding is a concealed fastener metal panel.
Which adds the screws.
Yes, sir.
You know what that leans to?
I do. Thank you.
And that would be on the sides and the roof, or the roof would be the same as what's similar to that?
Yeah, the roof would be a standard standing seam metal roof. It's a single slope roof with two parapet walls, so the roof would only be seen from the back of the warehouse.
Do you want to look at the elevations for the, of course, it's just a metal building, but I'm with your line, of course.
How do you get to the back where the crushed rock will be?
Can you go back to the... So if you turn off of Old Fannin onto Avalon Court... This is the, there it is. You turn off of Old Fannin onto Avalon Court, and then you turn left on Avalon South, and it'll go all the way to the even road. That third lot is where the gravel lot would be. And I'm proposing to fence it as well, so it's not seen.
Okay.
The parking area, you're going to fence that?
The gravel lot.
Gravel lot.
Where the green space is, no?
Yeah, the third lot closest to that larger open area is the third lot.
Do we have detail on the vegetation screening? Have you gotten to that point yet?
Oh, he hasn't submitted anything, you know, it should be 6 feet tall at the time of planning, we talked about that.
Really? At least 6 foot now, 6 foot, probably see fence, so I mean...
This is the vegetation screening that's on the west border.
It's going to run along.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
That eliminates the sightline issue from Old Fannin.
And that's going to go the length of the new...
Are you going to start it with the, where are you going to start it, here and run back, or all the way?
I would prefer to start it there, and run it back towards the end of the property, so it doesn't obstruct the, you know, the existing building.
Jay, what, you had questioned last time, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm just not a fan of putting metal building there.
What would you prefer, brick?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, that's the busiest road we got. There's building, every building around is brick. I don't know why we should deviate from what's there.
This concealed fastener metal panel is comparable to buildings that have recently been built on Lakeland Drive. So like Smalls, Burgers, and things like that.
I don't see much really price difference between the, I mean, how much price difference is between brick and, the panels are expensive, you know?
It's considerable.
Is it?
It's enough that I'd probably be looking to move if I got to put brick on a warehouse at this point.
What, if we, and it's not in my district, but it is my county. If there was a compromise to brick up halfway, or maybe not even halfway?
3 foot or?
Yep.
The way that I look at it is if I were building frontage on Old Fannin, the front of that building would have to be brick.
Yeah.
And some of the sides would have to be brick. But at some point, it would transition to a metal facade at the back of the building. That's where it's typically done around here. I'm viewing mine as not being on Old Fannin. The front of my elevation is very aesthetically pleasing, and as if I build it new, this is the back of the building that I'm building.
If you put that vegetation screen, that 3 foot brick wouldn't be seen at all, it wouldn't be seen, would it?
Yeah, you plan on putting a fence up, so you wouldn't see it anyway.
Well, the fence is not going to be on that side.
I mean, I have a, I have a picture of this panel on a building, if you'd like to see it, it's...
Why don't you put Jag looking at it?
Gee, thanks, guys.
Again, it's not the same color or the same... Dimension details.
Yeah.
Looks good.
I think that...
Yeah, I like that, yeah, it looks fine. To me, it's just...
I don't have, I don't have any issues with it, it's got to do with our...
Yeah, I'm good with it, I'm good with it as long as we're doing it, but how tall is that vegetation?
Just don't... I think she said at least 6 feet, that's the first I've heard of that. I'd be happy to plant whatever I need to plant there. Plants are cheap.
Yeah.
So the elevation on that Old Fannin side is, how tall is that?
Less than 20 feet.
20 feet, so we're about 14 feet above that, so I'm good with it.
Alright.
I'm good with it.
Scott makes a motion to set this, and...
I'll say.
Oh, we are, okay. Alright.
It'd be contingent on the drainage plan, like she said, I'm still working on that with an engineer.
Scott makes a motion to approve, Sid seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, supervisor.
I do want to note that Jay had some questions.
Can we move out of District 2 now?
Alright, Renee, next.
I had some technical difficulty, I'm sorry. Alright, so the next item is a site plan architectural review for Gary Robinson, Green Earth Products, at 648 Highway 469 North. Technical difficulties again, something's wrong with our computer.
I'm watching a movie over here.
Alright, so he's proposing to add a second building to be used for storage. The property is on C2. The building will be a 40 by 80 fully enclosed pole barn with metal exterior. It will match his existing building in materials and color, and the roof will be galvanized. That's an aerial view of the property, the buildings aren't visible from Highway 469. Alright, so this is his site plan. You can see the existing building, and then further north, the proposed building. Okay, these are the elevations. Alright, this is a view of the property, that's the pad. This is his existing building. These things that are on the outside are going to be stored into, in the new building when it's built. And then this is a view from 469. That slag driveway is, goes back to his property. And that's Neely's building there, it's an adjoining property. And then these are surrounding properties.
I went out and looked at the property, I don't know if y'all familiar with it, but where he's wanting to build it is, you know, it's not seen from 469. It won't, you know, really ever be seen from 469. You know where his property, where his existing building is now in the new building. You know, where it's located, but yeah, I don't have any issues with it, you know. I know Jay might want brick on it, but...
That's right.
Where this is located, Jay, I think we could get by maybe without brick on this.
Ms. Renee, you, could you go back to the site?
Yes, sir. Oh, the map.
The map, overhead there, site map. I wanted to see, what's that right there? One more.
What's the distance of the driveway? I mean, how far are we talking about off that, off of 469?
The measurement's probably there, but I can't see it on that.
I can't read that.
We got the, we got the files.
300.
300?
And the way the driveway is, I mean, there's other houses, it's not, you know, the front of it.
You can't see it from, you can't see any of it from 469 North.
336, 336 is what we think that says.
I would rather have the items that are on the outside on the inside.
Absolutely, we would too. Absolutely.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Make most of the proof.
I make most of the proof.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Brad, seconds. Any other discussion? Oh, do we require drainage on this?
Yes, and he's turned it in today, but Tim will have to review it, so it could be contingent, please, upon the approval.
Yeah, it's on the mouth of a, of a natural drainage, so there's no need for retention pond or anything like that, so... And we have, I have not disturbed any of the natural drainage on it when I put the pad in, so it should be good according to the study.
Alright, let's be contingent to the engineer's approval.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Nuisance.
Mr. President, first item under the nuisance section of our hearings today is the Stephanie D. Mayberry nuisance property at 317 Cherry Bar Drive. It's a District 4 property. I'll open that public hearing, I'll ask that Ms. Mayberry or anyone on her behalf be prepared to come forward. Ms. Renee is going to demonstrate with photos.
Alright, so we received a complaint in October of this year, or last year, I'm sorry, about an inoperable vehicle, rubbish and debris. The certified mail was delivered. These are pictures that were taken on October the 4th. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Y'all doing a little racing?
Well, my husband is a mechanic, and he collects a lot of parts, so the garage is filled with a lot of stuff. So over time, things just kind of slide on the side of the house. And I guess it was brought to my attention in October, because I typically don't go in the garage or in the backyard, because he does a lot of work. But it's gotten a little out of control, it has. We've talked about it, we, he cleaned up a little bit, he doesn't work here, he works out of town, he works for Waste Pro. So he's here about 6 to 8 days out the month. So this is what we've done since October. There was actually a truck right there, so we had that moved too, that wasn't in the pictures. That was originally what we thought the problem was, because he had a work truck that didn't work anymore, and we had to have somebody come tow it out. But it was for his job, and it took a minute for them to come get it. And then he lowered the car, but we received another notice on Monday, so...
The car does not appear to be driven. And the tag has been well expired.
Right.
So the car's going to have to go.
Okay, so the car has to go, alright.
Or put in the garage.
In the garage.
Garage is, garage is full.
I mean, it's part, it's car parts.
What you want more, the car or what's in the garage?
That's, that's my question to him, would you want more? Would you, the car, or, I mean, the car's been, it's a project, but I mean, the same things that you were thinking are the same things that we discussed. He, he hoards car parts, like motors, he, I mean, that's just...
Well, what we're going to do, and, and we don't just go out looking.
Well, I understand.
Because somebody's complaining.
I understand.
We're going to declare the nuisance. And you're going to have some time before it gets to justice to get that car removed. But when it gets to justice, then the hammer drops, okay? So I'm going to make a motion, we declared its nuisance, and you know, I would say in less than 30 days, get the car gone, okay?
Okay.
And we'll be buddies, alright?
I'm going to second your motion.
Alright, I've made a motion, Scott seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am, thank you for being understanding.
For the record, Mr. President, that, that matter, that hearing is closed. Item two, Mr. President, is the Timothy Frank nuisance property at 117 Dogwood Circle. This is a District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Frank or anyone on Mr. Frank's behalf to be prepared to come forward. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
Alright, so this is in Belgrove subdivision. We got a complaint November 30th of '23 about this abandoned home, broken windows, and dilapidated fence. These pictures were taken December the 4th. All our certified mail was undelivered. And then these were the pictures that were taken yesterday.
Is this a house?
It's in Belgrove subdivision.
Is it a mortgage company that has it now, like for closure or something?
I think that this fellow's address, I think he just owns it, he, you know, he lives somewhere else. His mailing address is different than that location, so I've forgotten what date was on the deed, but...
I assume he's not here.
Is Frank here? Anyone on behalf of Mr. Frank?
Alright, Scott?
I went by the 27th two days ago, and it's exactly how she described it. The tree's been cut and left in place, the windows, most of the front windows and the sides are broken. And I believe the front door, I don't know if you can see the angle, but I think the front door's actually open there as well.
It looked like during the first picture, I saw the front door was open. Well, I mean, it might be just dark shadow.
This, this thing could potentially be a problem. We know that exposed and open like that, that's, that's a major, that's a major problem. Mr. President, my suggestion is that we go ahead and declare the nuisance, and we ask the Justice Court to help to intervene here. In the meantime, we probably need to do a little bit of investigation to try to determine who is the owner, where is the owner? Are there liens against the property? And maybe we can contact some lien holders, holders of deed of trust, that type thing, and encourage them to step forward and try to protect their investment here.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Scott Berry makes a motion to declare the nuisance. Brad Calhoun seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Mr. President, that, that hearing is closed.
Thank you. Alright, that will conclude our planning commission, and we'll have another on March 28th. And I have a motion to adjourn out of the planning commission.
I'll make the motion to adjourn out of the planning commission.
Alright, Brad makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds the motion. All in favor? Motion passes, we have adjourned, and now I'm going to call our Rain County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And the next step... And the next step from there is public comments. I have a few, but I believe they're related to items that are on our agenda. Is there anyone here for a public comment that's not related to a matter that we've got on the agenda? Okay, we'll continue. Stacy, you're up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just asking for authority to publish homestead exemption public notice deadline in the Rankin County News for March the thirteenth.
Make a motion, Brad.
Second.
Brad makes motion, Jay seconds motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if I may, I, I'd like to ask for, uh, your permission to ask our friends from CNPDD to step forward if they are prepared. I managed to not get word to Ms. Sam that we need to have this on the agenda, but this is for the purpose of discussing any additional questions that you may have with respect to the upcoming action to adopt amendments to your zoning ordinance, and also to address one additional consideration with you as well, and I'll, I'll bring that up. If Dave's ready, I'm prepared to bring it up, I'll talk about it, but, uh, we, we got several things that we want to talk to you guys about, and just make sure we're all on the same page.
Uh, since we last met a week or two ago, um, and we gave you the, I think about six pages of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, we were asked to look at, uh, an addition of a flood preservation overlay district. And the idea behind this was to protect areas that are involved in the floodplain and floodways, to control densities of development and oversight of what's developed there. The overlay district would function like any other overlay, in that the underlying zoning would dictate what is allowed there, but the additional regulations would, uh, would control the density of development. In other words, if it were, uh, say, an R-one-D zone, for example, this may, uh, require, uh, less dense development. Uh, and the idea was to just alleviate, uh, potential problems with runoff on the neighboring properties and things that we've seen in, in some parts of the county. Craig's passing out, out some maps, those are individual district maps of each of your districts that show the zoning as well as the, uh, floodplain on that. Yes, that's the current adopted zoning. And then highlighted inside the floodplain are undeveloped properties.
Red?
The hot pink or red are your undeveloped properties in the floodplain or floodway. The black areas are your municipal boundaries, so we took that out of consideration, so you don't have to look at that. The striped.
Looking at it like this, you're talking about the lines.
The blue stripes are your floodway, or, excuse me, floodplain, your hundred-year floodplain.
Blue stripes.
And the solid blue is your floodway. That's gonna be the act, typically the actual creek or waterway.
Ray, hold on just a second, let me make sure they're, when they look at their map, they know what they're looking for. Do you see the hatched reddish magenta outline? That's what you want to focus on. The, I'll, I'll come down and. Looks like deer antlers on your map.
Yours.
Yours.
That's the red.
Jay says a whole lot of blacks in there.
Yeah, the, the dark gray or blacks municipal.
I know.
Those are the areas, what you're looking for. What, what are my areas where I'm going to need to think or, or be focused on? Because the overlay regulations will apply to the areas that are the hatch, the hash areas. That's where the overlay will apply. If it's not inside of a hash area, it doesn't apply. Does that make sense?
Fred, one thing I'd like to mention too, this would not apply to agricultural properties.
Right.
So, this is really looking at.
Pretty much all mine.
I think all yours is gonna be.
Ag uses. But if you're, if it's a residential.
Yep. If it's like in, in ags, one of our ag subdivisions, for residential purposes, it, it would apply.
But row crops.
Right.
That sort of thing wouldn't be impacted.
Hunting land. Recreational.
That's what we talked about, yeah. It is.
What the.
There you go.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that other side, that's what you, you're right.
So, what are we trying to do with this? Picture perspective here is, and we, we want to recognize that development activity in the areas that are, are on your map as hash sections. Any kind of development act, significant development activity in those areas is gonna pose a real and significant potential flood risk for whatever gets developed there. And so, we want to overlay, we're not saying that you can't do anything there, but we want to overlay some restrictions on exactly what can be done there.
Right.
So that it's best protected against hazardous flood risks. Extra, layer of protection and discussions ahead of time is kind of what we're trying to promote.
All right, the blue line outlined by red is a wet area?
It's a flood plain.
It is a flood plain.
I got a good bit of that.
That's based on the FEMA designation for the hundred-year A zones.
Got that. In fact, FEMA flood, flood map, so the federal government put the flood map, uh, on the basis of their analysis. We just simply overlay this, propose overlay this grid using the FEMA map.
Okay.
Those are the special hazard areas that require flood insurance as well.
Part of, part of justification why we're doing this is our effort with respect to stormwater management. That's highlighted that having good survival regulation related to stormwater management is a great idea if you're trying to get help from the federal government with your stormwater management activities. Uh, there is a lot of, if you're not helping.
All right. I think we, we got one big map of the whole Rankin County that we could use to utilize during the Washington.
Yes, yes. So, you each have your own map to look at and study, I want you to take the time to do that if you will. Some of you are affected more than others, just the way God created Rankin County and brings it. But, so, some of you not gonna have very much impact at all. So, take time to look at that if you will. This is gonna be in front of you on Monday as part of your proposed zoning amendment. You have your public hearing on Monday, and you'll have your opportunity to adopt your zoning amendment. Dave and Ray have passed out again for you, and I think this includes the zone, so we'll apply the flood overlay, doesn't it?
It does.
You've now got your document that, that lays out for you all of the proposed amendments. So, it's important, before Monday, if you will, kind of look those over, and if you have any questions about them, we'll be ready to talk about them on Monday before you make your decision.
Okay.
Ray, I'll mention one other thing, I was talking to Tim, uh, earlier, he had a good suggestion on, on the addition to this.
Zone A, yeah, I've been talking to Dwayne about it, looking at the zone A flood zone, which is where there's no flood elevation determined. Uh, I think we need to make sure to be noted here that it'll be the responsibility of the builder, developer, whoever it is, to establish base flood, to do a flood study and establish those elevations.
Yes. That's a good point, if you don't have a base flood elevation established, you don't know how, you don't know what twenty-four inches above base flood elevation is. So, the, the point being, we want the developer to be responsible for that and not the county to be responsible for that. Just do a subvision, Bill.
Dwayne, would you like to come up and speak, or any more?
I don't, I mean, the, the ag may be just whatever. I, I don't know how you determine what elevation you're gonna let a builder do if there's no base flood elevation established.
I think we just need to establish in our zoning ordinance at the appropriate place. We just have to need to set the state for any construction of a dwelling in Rankin County where there is no base flood elevation established. Somebody has to be responsible for establishing the base flood elevation. The property owner, developer, the builder, somebody.
We had a reason to think of that and, um, if they're allowed to do the extrapolation points, we need to help with this. So, that was a question an engineer presented to us, is, you know, that's allowed, so could they do that? So, that's one thing I would like to do, like he said.
Answered no. I want a, we, we want to know what the base flood elevation is, with some reasonable assurance that it's accurate. The point being this, gentlemen, at some point, we will be accused, we and county will be accused, of allowing something to happen. So, I, I don't want to be in that trick bag. Let's, uh, let's force the owner, the property, the developer to establish base flood elevation. That way, there's somebody responsible for saying, this is where this foundation has to be set. And it doesn't even be us.
Agree.
So, y'all think about that, it needs, it doesn't need to be embedded in the overlay. It needs to be placed in the zoning ordinance at a, at a point that is general enough to capture any dwelling that is to, planned to be constructed in an A zone. We can't know that well.
We can add that to the general regs under Article four.
That's where we want it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good catch.
Yeah, I think we just need to be clear on the front end that it's not gonna be passed on to a holder of the subject, it's not gonna be passed on to, it's gonna be to the homeowner to do it, it's gonna be done by the developer on the front end, so the whole thing is established.
Can we drop that in our development ordinance, just to be safe? Let's just make it compatible across the board, it'll be in the zoning ordinance and the development ordinance. I'm, I'm all about full coverage, I don't care if it's in the same place, as long as they're consistent. I don't want it to be cross-purposes, so. How do we update our development ordinance, Tim?
How do?
Yeah. Y'all sort of.
We ask the board lawyer how we do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we not just include that in the floodplain ordinance, and that would take care of that?
The, the problem that I have with that is, who's gonna consult the floodplain ordinance? You talking about the, the flood damage prevention ordinance? Yeah, I, I have the developer to see it as soon as possible. So, then I would, then I would leave the development ordinance first, and then hopefully consult the ordinance at some point. And if it's in both of those places, then it's better that they're on notice. Y'all got any questions at this point, guys?
Not yet.
I, uh, I don't know. Twenty-six. Utility scale solar. What, what are we talking about with that?
It's defined in here, uh.
It defines, it, it defines exactly what that means.
I've, I've read them, uh, and it's more than a half of an acre or less?
Yes, greater than one half of an acre, yes.
And they will be identified in what zoning?
Industrial.
Allowed in. Allowed in I-two. Additional use in I-one.
They're all conditional uses, so they have to come before you.
Okay.
I see it would be allowed outright.
They're all conditional.
No, they're I-two except.
So, what if there's.
They are or are not allowed outright.
Outright, not to, but conditional use and not.
Okay.
So.
So, ag land would have to get rezoned?
Yes, that's, that was, I mean, that was.
What you was thinking.
Yeah. All right, does anybody else have anything?
I think all of that is, it's not a, it's not an agricultural use.
Right.
You know, sometimes they're erroneously called solar farms, but they're actually farms.
That's about the only place you got to bring the foot.
And they need to be, they need to be in close proximity to significant electric infrastructure. It doesn't make sense to put them way out in the middle of nowhere, where none of the power generated can see adequately, quickly and efficiently available to the grid.
Obviously, do we have anything?
Use that is just using the solar as a means of power for that use. They may be able to establish that, but they need to rezone it.
Well, there are, I don't think there's many in Mississippi, but there are farms in the nation that do use solar to power their farms.
Yeah.
I don't have any in my district, I don't think we have any in county. But if that were to come to us, we would handle it on a case-by-case basis.
I, I think if it's less than a half acre footprint speed, then it's, then it's not considered a, a, a utility scale, and you're not regulating that.
I've seen them more, like on a dairy, not in Mississippi, I hadn't, but I think we can, if that comes before us, we'll.
Would this be the document that we would describe the removal, so once the, the solar panels are, their life is expired?
Yes, sir.
It's on page six.
It is page six, and they're out of requirements.
Decommissioning.
Decommissioned.
That, that is made dated in the ordinance.
Okay, that is true.
We, we do that similarly with our cell towers as well. We have some language, this is already existing language, that talks about decommissioning the cell towers, so we're familiar, y'all are familiar with that.
All right, um, we'll look over this and probably have some more questions, I don't, is this something we need to take action on today?
Is this Monday, you said?
Monday, you have your public hearing on your proposed amendments, that's Monday.
Yep.
We wanted to have, we wanted you to have the hot off the press latest stuff.
Good.
If they can look at it over the weekend.
All right.
So, Renee, do we currently require them to do a permit?
Yes.
We do. Yeah, okay.
I don't know if y'all want to add something that says that it's implied in subdivision, they have to have a consent approval. An HOA, there is one.
Yeah, I mean, some HOA rules and regulations.
So, here's the problem. The, the subdivision, HOAs are gonna have their own private restrictive covenants. Unless y'all just feel strongly that you want essentially to take some level of responsibility to kind of behave like an HOA, I, I, I would, I would advise against that. If the HOA is thoughtful enough to have regulations about that on the front end, then, then we're gonna enforce the, or allow that to be enforced. But, but if it's not in the existing covenants, I don't, I don't know that we need to get into the business of trying to become a super HOA at that stage.
I agree. All right.
What did you say, Brian?
We require engineers to stand plants on all solar panel installations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just coming to get a permit, we, we require plants for that.
Okay.
Mississippi licensed engineers, as I say, sealed so.
Mississippi licensed engineers, as I say, sealed solar panels. They're approved and put on the structure.
So that's weight load, wind load, all that kind of stuff you looked at, all right?
We, we go through all of that and make sure it's up to our standards before we approve it.
Got it.
I should've normally had a permit for that.
Okay. I'm not gonna ask this question. For electric fences and you have solar panels, that's not a use. Our, our neighbor mine's got one. I'm just wondering.
He needs a permit.
I wanna say how much I appreciate Dave and Gray. Always handy to help us. Never leave us in the lurch. Uh, go above and beyond. Uh, they put together those maps for you guys at our request, uh, and they did it, uh, very fast turnaround. So I just, again, I just wanna say how much I appreciate CNPD for all the assistance and help they give us.
So is that on our viewer now?
We can, we can have that there.
That'd be good, 'cause I like to look at the other supervisor's district.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your work.
Mr. President, uh, item A in my section is adoption of resol, of resolution of support. Uh, the state legislature requires anytime there's going to be a local and private request submitted, requires an actual resolution supporting it to be adopted. And so that's what we're doing. This is the adoption of, uh, a resolution of support for our enabling legislation on our stormwater management district piece of legislation that's ready to, it's teed up, it's ready to go. So I, I need a motion to approve the adoption of that resolution.
Scott makes motion.
Second.
Jay second, second motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
After the motion passes.
Uh, item B is the adoption of a similar resolution of support. This is on our Trustmark Park support resolution. Uh, we didn't think we were gonna have to do that since you adopted one last year, but the legislature is asking for an, uh, a current resolution of support on the Trustmark Park local and private legislation. I need a motion to support.
Just in case that we do happen to get affiliated teams come in.
And what, how much support are we talking about?
We're not committing nothing.
Yeah.
You know, it was just up to one point four million is what the original was.
Right. The, the support resolution, uh, simply authorizes Rankin County and the City of Pearl to combine at whatever agreed-upon amount is established at the point in time that you've got a double A affiliate, you've got a commensurate, uh, professional baseball team lined up, which we don't have at the moment. Uh, so until all of that happens, this board is not doing anything. The, the document that is being supported here is enabling legislation to do that if all of that falls into place and y'all can agree on this court amount.
There was word that was not included in a sentence. And when it came out, we, everybody thought that it was what we had expected and it wasn't. It, anyhow.
The wording got changed between when our attorneys handed it off to them and to when they drafted the language.
Correct.
They left out the word annually. And for some reason, they think that's a big deal, you know?
So Jay makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Skid seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
All right, gentlemen, I've got a couple of items under additional business. I just wanted to call your attention to that.
Morning. Oh, man, y'all official up the podium.
No.
I feel like I'm gonna be here a while. Uh, item A is authority, uh, for the Sheriff's Department along with our grant coordinator to apply for the JAG law enforcement grant, uh, the money to be used to purchase cameras for the Sheriff's Department.
I got a motion.
Motion.
Scott makes motion. Jay second, second motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Item B is a, uh, just based on time, uh, before we meet again, the travel plans had changed, so we're asking you to amend the prior authorization, uh, to allow two extra days of travel, uh, for Raymond Duke.
All right. I make the motion.
Second.
Scott seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Item C is to give me authority to, uh, basically administer our Philman account. Somebody needs to be in charge of it.
I make the motion.
Second.
Brad seconds motion. Any other discussion?
So once we do get a purchase clerk, that'll change?
It can. It can.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passes.
Um, item D, uh, further discussion and potential action regarding our purchase clerk position. Uh, just to give you an update, after discussions earlier, I did reach out to an individual, presented the job offer as described, he accepted, he resigned from his job or turned in his notice. So.
Can I get one clarity?
Yes.
You said that he would be he, here up to two years.
Well.
But that was kind of a misstatement. Will you explain?
I asked him to commit to two years.
He committed to at least?
At least two years.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So I was asked to put this up for discussion amongst the board.
I think y'all know my feeling on it. I, I wanna post the job. I wanna take, you know, and see what we have available. And if he's gonna be here temporary anyway, we need to get somebody here.
We don't know he's gonna be here temporary. I mean, anybody can start a job and quit.
Yeah, but he's.
I mean, he's committed.
He's at the end of his career here, so I don't imagine he gonna. How old is this guy?
I, honestly, I don't know. I know he has twenty-five years of purchase clerk experience.
So he could be fifty or he could be seventy-five.
I, he's not that old. He's probably, I would say between sixty and sixty-four, maybe.
I mean, who's doing the job now?
As of today, well, Bridget's last day is officially today.
Right.
She's been out all week, so we have an assistant purchase clerk.
Who turned the job down?
Right.
So, so to clarify, you said he's gonna, as of now, confer, uh, well, commit to two years, maybe more, but, but at least?
That was my ask of him was, hey, if you take the job, you got to be here at least two years. And he said he didn't have a problem with that.
Does he have experience? Twenty-five years.
But not in county government. There's a big difference in state purchasing and county purchasing. So, you know, uh, we're over a barrel here. Like I said, I think we should have dealt with this well in advance. We're, we're under the gun. Our purchase clerk is gone, you know, so I, I still, I don't agree that we're paying him six thousand more dollars when we're hiring out one girl too, so.
Well, man, I, I just think we need to get somebody in the job to fill the position, you know, uh. And I, Monnerston, I thought we agreed, and correct me if I'm wrong, to hire, uh, a gentleman that you was talking about the last time that we discussed this. I mean, I was just asking. I don't, am I right or wrong on that?
We hadn't voted on anything, but Keith did throw that out there that he knew somebody.
Yeah. And, and let me give you a little clarification on this. This, this is someone that I've worked with twenty years ago. I've seen him probably three or four times at CPE events, uh, over the past decade. It's just, the last time I ran into him was at Larry Swill's retirement. I mean, and I guess that stuck in my head that there's a purchase clerk, we need somebody. Um, that's why I made the call.
And my question is, Jay, I mean, I, and I'm just asking for discussion. I mean, we need somebody. It's, I assume we're, we're, I know we're behind the eight ball because we assumed somebody else was taking possession and, you know, things didn't, you know, or but if you advertise it, you know, how long you, you know, you gonna advertise it? Then we're still three weeks, a month, you know, before, you know, that somebody's got to be filling this position and doing.
We have someone here currently. I mean, we're not going without service.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't wanna say hold on, but.
Um, I mean, correct. If, if he does come in, we can't do the job. I mean, we're not getting revenue, you know?
I can tell you this, man. We've never hired a department head that this board hadn't ever laid eyes on.
Right.
We don't know anything about this guy. We ain't never talked to him. We don't know if he's gonna interact well with our staff. I mean, there's a whole bunch of.
We, we don't know how long the one that's gonna oversee it is gonna be there next until we get somebody hired.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be next week or.
That's true. I just don't wanna be caught in the bind, you know, with nobody, uh, you know. And like I said, I don't know this gentleman. I agree, we probably should've, he should've come in.
Can you bring him in Monday?
I could try.
I, I know him, just on a personal. I don't know the business side of things. I just, I know who he is through, through relationships.
And his character?
Great guy.
I don't even know if we know his name yet.
Let's bring him in Monday.
I think so.
Yeah.
Let's, let's be careful.
With the name.
We can certainly go in the executive and, and talk specifics about a candidate if you'd like.
Yeah.
I, I, I hate to be the bad guy on that, but let's, let's just be real careful.
I would like to know who's, you know, eventually his name.
Well, why don't, why don't, can we?
Nobody's ever asked.
Can we do it till Monday? I mean, wait and, and do this Monday and maybe he can come and, and interview?
Absolutely.
Let's do that. Is that all right with y'all?
That'll be done in executive session as per normal.
Right.
How, how we gonna do that? We'll do that in executive on Monday.
Personally.
If y'all, if, if the gentleman is able to be here.
All right, so we're not gonna take action on this and I'm gonna make a note, uh, executive Monday.
So we're not advertising the job?
It, well, we may after Monday.
Uh, it's just for putting.
All right. Well, today's Thursday.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, we still can advertise it, you know.
Monday?
Monday, if we don't come to.
If we're not satisfied.
Right.
But Keith, from the time that we advertise until the person is in the job, how long is that?
Process.
Probably within a month.
Uh, I'd say at least thirty days.
You would expect a candidate to have to give a two weeks notice that I'm in a moment?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's, if y'all don't mind, let's discuss this Monday. And if he, if this person can come in and we can do an interview, then we'll reset it that time.
All right, the next item, uh, I won't bring out Renee over here, but, uh, it's, it's gonna be her position, which she'll be leaving in June, so I wanted to get a head start and get the board's input on the direction.
I think we should discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
All right.
You wanna wait until Monday to do that?
We'll do it today.
We'll have it.
And we can discuss the other today in executive session.
Absolutely. Any questions on Monday's agenda?
I don't have any. I'll wait till six o'clock. All right. Thank you.
All right, additional business will be Craig.
Yes, sir. Fast background, uh, la, last August, probably it was in July, we initiated discussions with you guys about our legislative initiatives for the 2024 session. We always try to get started on legislative initiatives in about July preceding that particular year. So I got two guys that were not here in July to meaningfully participate in anything. Uh, they took action, uh, in January and obviously the session's already going when you guys showed up. And so it's kind of a lost situation on, on, on y'all's participation. Having said that, uh, back last July, the decision was made with counsel from trusted legislators and other advisors, this board decided we are not gonna ask, uh, we're not gonna make any significant asks for appropriations during the 2024 session. That decision was based on the fact that Rankin County has done well in both the 2022 session and the 2023 session. And, uh, has been, uh, provided significant support by the state legislature in both of those sessions. And so having, having that background, the decision, the board made the decision, we're gonna limit our requests for 2024 to the enabling legislation for our stormwater district, which is a big, big, big ask and task, but doesn't have a, a dollar amount associated with it. Uh, and then some small, very small issues that are kind of cleanup in nature. There's a statute that affects primarily the Chamber of Clerk's Office where there is a distinction between the filing of certain documents that makes no sense and we believe was an oversight from a prior piece of legislation. And so we're fixing that. Uh, and then there's, there's another issue that has to do with the solid waste hearing officer. So those have been the, the efforts so far. About a week and a half ago, myself and others began getting communications from state legislators saying, what are you gonna ask for in the way of appropriations? And I guess, uh, we need to be in a position that if we do have appropriations requests that the board believes are appropriate, we need to get on the same page since we haven't discussed that. So that's what this is. This is a discussion of specific requests that the board would like to make to the legislators in the event that there is a decision made to appropriate funding to Rankin County for the 24 session. What do we need to tell our folks that help us to ask for?
Before we get all the way into that, do we have support or is there a bill for Sheriff Bailey to have radar? And are we behind that bill?
There is every single year.
I thought so.
There is a, uh, there is a number of bills, usually, what's here, half a dozen probably, that get dropped. How many legislators do we have in Rankin County? Uh, there's usually one bill per Rankin County legislator that is dropped. Uh, they, they don't come out of committee.
I know the Southern County Senator in Southern County is just there all this time.
So we, usually we will adopt a resolution of support, um, and, um, circulate that certainly to the Rankin County delegation. Uh, the history, Scott, on that is we, we always have strong support, indications of support from Rankin County legislators for, uh, the sheriff to be provided with, with that tool of law enforcement. Um, but consistently, it, it never makes it out of committee.
I got you. Okay. I thank you.
One thing that I'm facing, uh, we all, I think we all are, that we weren't aware of in July, is dead trees near our roads. And the electric companies, uh, are out there cut, they're cutting limbs and trees that will affect their power line. Now, they're not cleaning them up. They're generally left in the right of way. Um, but in the rural areas, more so than urban, we have a tremendous amount of dead trees that will be affecting us. If there's an avenue to get some funding through this legislation, I would like for them to ask for that.
The, and. Thinking back and off of that, I mean, that was a big topic at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what anybody else has to.
There's, there's other counties asking now for money from the legislators. And I mean, that was a big talk.
I don't know that they'll fund it. I don't know if they, they've got, I don't know where they get it from. But if we don't start this process, we may miss out on something that we don't know about.
Is there a dollar amount? That's my question. Is it a dollar amount, an estimate of?
Yeah, about five.
I guess that's a Mike Harris.
About five million dollars.
We believe four to five million is what it's gonna cost us to clean our trees.
I think that, I don't wanna put Mike in a box, but I think.
Mike, you mentioned that specifically, that you felt like the total could be as much as four million dollars. I, I remember that specifically as a part of Mike bringing that forward and telling you guys, we've got this unbudgeted expense that we can plan for. And that's the key. I think the legislature wants to help because of the unbudgeted nature of this. Nobody could've planned for this. We didn't, I mean, it's historical drought level. Uh, and so nobody would've been able to predict the, the deadfall that results from that and how it would impact the road right of way. What's interesting is that even at federal level, there's a lot of talk about this, but what we discovered was they're not considering the public road right of way when they think about the impact.
So we brought that to the attention of our federal partners in DC and, you know, they can't even get a budget passed. So who knows whether we'll have, we'll have trees that are ready to be harvested before they ever getting around to passing a budget. So I'm not sure what kind of help we could count on from the federal government.
Well, it's, it's not much of an emergency if it's not something that we tackle now. I mean, because it, like you say, it may be three or four years when they come out and say yes, and then we have to apply for that money based on what we spent and we have to keep records. But, uh, uh, and I think we should include cleanup with it. We don't want to cut the trees down and leave them. Unless it's an area of a forest type deal where you can push them in there. So it's not just cutting the tree and laying them down like the utility companies are doing.
Steve, and that includes but the transportation component of that?
Yep.
And you're gonna have tipping fees, dumping fees.
Yep.
Because this, this debris can't be, just be placed anywhere, right? We've been down that road before. Although my hope would be that Mike is already thinking about some staging areas that would help us, uh, to be able to efficiently handle that.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done, you know, since we talked last week, I've actually got with Lance Cooper on this and we've gone through the demo stages of it. So we're connecting back to our GIS map. We'll be able to take a GPS, handheld GPS, go out there and mark the tree, be able to put in the DBH of the tree. And it'll mark the location on a map, it'll download it, and we'll be able to put all this on a spreadsheet. And we already got a cost of what the trees are gonna cost to cut and remove and all that stuff. And we've got some different codes we're gonna put in. So we'll be able to go, as we develop and then start doing this next week, we'll start being able to give a rundown of what this exactly is gonna cost us ahead of the tree cutting we've already got done. We'll have good records of that, of the DBH, and that's what I've been understood through what everybody is, through my connections, through MDOT. That's what, everybody's gonna measure this off of.
How you planning on prioritizing these?
Jay, what we're gonna do is go through and I mean, we've got like cutting clean, cutting, you know, private property. I mean, the ones that's endangering the roads, you know.
We got trees falling now.
Yeah, I mean, we, yesterday we cleaned up probably ten trees. Yesterday tops just fell out of them. I mean, these trees are dying. I mean, they already done slipped a bark in less than two months. And, uh.
Mike.
And our.
If this tree trunk.
Mm-hmm.
Is not in our right of way, but it's obviously gonna fall across the road.
We're gonna have to take it down.
We've got, when we have that authority.
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna get with Craig, I'm gonna get with Craig and we're gonna get a, a generic permission slip so I can go to somebody's house and say, hey, we're gonna remove this tree and they'll sign off on it.
Right, right in the trees.
Okay.
Exactly what we're doing with our ARPA projects.
And same way with where we, where we're gonna be disposing of our stuff. I, I mean, we've got some county property we're gonna be able to and, and we got some private properties I've talked to Craig about, you know, that, well, we'll have some staging areas.
Put them and chip them or burn them or something, whatever.
Do something according to DQ standards, sure. Uh, my other ask was, you know, my, my two things for me, as a legislator, would be the trees. And I know we had several roads in some areas that got really impacted bad, uh, with cracks and, I mean, with the movement of the clay.
Yep.
Uh, in some areas is.
Mike, you're not supervisor, you don't get an answer.
I'm just asking. It don't hurt to ask, Jay. But anyway, that was my.
Hey, Mike, Mike, on your end, I mean, I know we're gonna probably contract a lot of this out, but would it be beneficial if, if Mike, because we fix them getting a busy time of the year on roads and stuff like that. I mean, would it be beneficial to, I don't know how many employees you got to hire, two or three, just dedicate to nothing but tree cleaning?
Contract with professional tree services.
Well, I think what Brad's talking about is some of the cleanup Steve behind the power companies and different people that's doing right now.
I'm saying, I mean, in places, our.
Most of our power companies are working really good with us. I mean, if we've got something that's close, you know, they can't do every tree we've got, but, uh, we've got one power association that's really working well with us. If we've got some trees in our area and they're somewhere as close around the power line, they'll come knock them down for us. All we gotta do is clean them up. So it is a savings to us, you know, we're not having to pay for a tree to be removed. They're getting their bucket crews to do it, but we're all having to clean it up. And I talked to, me and Sheriff talked ahead of the meeting and talking about getting some inmates, but yes, we've kinda coming up with a plan, Brad, to maybe hire a couple extra guys, maybe some retired guys that's got CDLs that, you know, wanna work this summer. Uh, that, you know, don't need a job every day, but, you know, wanna work right now. And, uh, that, so when I talked to Keith about that this morning, we was looking at my budget to see where we can. I mean, we're kinda up and down on my budget, so I think we could hire a couple extra just to help fill this void.
Okay.
So we're looking at that and hopefully I have access to that next week.
Sounds like we have plenty of.
And back to the, you know, money I, you know, was, y'all know the Gunner Road, you know, I talked to, got roughly six million, which has spent roughly a million of it, you know, in a project of the new phase. And, uh, Brian Rhodes had come to me about, uh, you know, asking what we needed for that. And I was gonna talk to y'all about, you know, uh, six million dollars funding for the new part of Florence Byron Parkway. I mean, it's already started, don't wanna lose it, you know, and we, they have been making progress. Of course, y'all know more about it than I do because it was started, you know, before I come on board. But, uh, you know, to continue the process, you know, of the, the road.
How much engineering is still left on that road, Tim?
Wrong engineer, Mr., Mr. President.
Oh.
That's a benchmark project.
Alright, sorry.
And we would, you know, are you doing any of that project?
How much is the project altogether?
So the most recent, uh, the most recent estimate, Jay, is, uh, it depends on whether or not you choose the current, the current, uh, makeup of the project as phased. There's two phases. Phase one takes the, takes the road from Cleary to Old Highway forty-nine with improvement along Old Highway forty-nine, both north to Richland and south to Florence. That project cost estimate is in the neighborhood of about sixteen million total. If you take the, the fa- if you remove Phase A and Phase B, and Phase B is the grade separation over, uh, Old Forty-Nine and the railroad track to New Forty-Nine, if you eliminate the phasing and you just do it as one complete project, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty million.
And let me say, when he was talking about, you know, coming from Cleary to Old Forty-Nine, well, personally to me, it makes not any sense to come there and spend that extra money on Old Forty-Nine, get to Forty-Nine. You understand that? DOT wants us to improve Old Forty-Nine to get back to Forty-Nine if we don't go all the way. In other words, we can't do that phase and stop at Old Forty-Nine unless we improve.
Yep.
Old Forty-Nine.
That's correct.
You know, and to me, it makes no sense to, to do that and spend that money when another four or five million, you can go all the way to Highway Forty-Nine. You understand? It's kinda like they got us, they wanting us to, to either improve Old Forty-Nine, you know, or we can go from, uh, do the phase all the way to New Forty-Nine, you know, with the bridge in over for additional maybe four million.
Roughly, yes, sir. That's right. That's right.
And these are just numbers.
So I'm confused, man. So if we do Phase One.
Well, the Phase One was coming from Cleary Road to Old Forty-Nine, correct?
That's right.
Alright, but they will not let us stop there unless we improve Old Highway Forty-Nine to anticipate the traffic flow.
So if we don't do Phase One, just do the whole thing, we don't have to improve Old Forty-Nine?
That's correct. You're exactly right.
We can go straight to, you know, Forty-Nine for additional maybe four million, three or four million, you know.
Engineers estimate.
Right. To me, it just don't make any sense to.
What would the improvement of Old Forty-Nine cost?
That's what we're saying, roughly.
Somewhere between five and six million.
Are you serious?
Yep.
So.
Just to do?
Just to do the improvements.
To, to get to, right, to get to, you know.
So let, let's, th- this project began life as one complete project from Cleary to New Forty-Nine. That's how it began life. There was a grade cross, it was planned as a grade crossing at the Canadian National Railway. Canadian National said, uh-uh.
Yep.
No, no thank you unless you close two public cr- crossings on our system. Then we'll let you come across a grade here. You gotta close two to get one. And we looked at the cost to do that and it was astronomical. It was hard to find, number one, it was hard to find two public crossings that we could close. Uh, but the two that were identified as the only two available to us had significant dollar costs associated with them because you have to construct means of access for the people who are no longer gonna have access to their property from a grade crossing closure. So, uh, it was gonna be a significant cost. So we jettisoned that and said, well, let's just figure a way, a way to do this project without having to go over the railroad. And that's when phase to get to Old Forty-Nine came into being. What nobody anticipated was that MDOT was gonna say, improve Old Forty-Nine all the way to Richland and all the way to Florence to handle the additional traffic that you're putting on Old Forty-Nine. That's an MDOT rule.
So the monies that are sitting there to.
You've got six and a half million dollars that has been appropriated to this project.
When is that money, when does that run out?
We, we need to have it accounted for within the next couple of years. We have time.
It's a sliding deal though, isn't it? As we use it, the calendar continues.
Uh, I, I think as long as we're making progress, and we are, you guys are acquiring right of way right now. And so we're doing what we need to do. While I got you talking about this, uh, uh, this would be helpful for me to know because I think we need to pass this along to our right of way acquisition guys. Uh, it seems to me that it'd be appropriate for us, once we have all of the right of way for the Phase A to get to Old Forty-Nine, we have, we're gonna have additional monies left in the funds. We oughta go ahead and get the Phase B right of way while we're at it. We haven't authorized the right of way acquisition agents to move on to Phase B, the stuff that's associated with getting to Old Forty-Nine?
We're not gonna have a Phase B.
Well.
Yep.
So.
But we still got to acquire.
You gotta get the right of way and the, the thought process is you've got the funds to get it. This might be the time to get it.
We'll be from the railroad track, Two Forty-Nine to New Forty-Nine, right, to New Forty-Nine.
The twenty million, Sid, how much of, of that bridge is gonna be the twenty million?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of about eight to ten, Jay.
So half. Well, so we got six and a half and we got, it's ten, so really we may not need legislature, but the, they give us six million, we might could be, if we could get a Chrissy grant to pay the.
That's the point.
Yeah.
We, we think.
You applied.
Yeah, we, we applied, uh, we, we did not get, nobody's gotten any funding. Congress can't get their act together and we're in an election cycle. But, but we were told that we are not likely to get our current Chrissy application on this particular grade crossing funded. Uh, and I, I believe that is because we literally the year before, we got funded on the Greenfield Road.
Well, I think they used it all up and on the coast. Wasn't it a big project that they applied for, a Chrissy grant down there?
But, but they weren't gonna grant Rankin County two, two grade crossings back to back like that. They just wasn't gonna happen. We're, we're way too red of a district for that to happen. So, but we feel good about the qualification of Florence Byron Parkway grade separation for a Chrissy planning grant and ultimately a Chrissy construction grant. We feel good about that.
See, is this, I, I wasn't aware that as many people as it is live around the Cleary area until I think maybe you told me how many homes were in there, or maybe it was Mike, somebody told me. But years ago, before I was on the board, Jay did it, built a bridge.
Eagle Post.
And I've been down there to eat at that fish house. Maybe a dozen times in the last four, five, six years. And I, I've never seen a car go over. Would this have more traffic?
Well, it would, but that road that you're talking about, it's used more in the morning time and the evening for school and people going to work, you know. But, uh, yeah, this here, I mean, have you been down Cleary Road?
No.
When you leave out of Florence, I mean.
No.
It's a no truck road and it's, I mean, like a lot of the roads, I mean, it's narrow and, uh, but on top of that, it would just open up the potential for development where Florence is out of development, you know, areas. And, uh, it would just open up potential, you know, for subdivisions or something else to come through there. There's a lot of available property, you know, to open up, you know, with.
So where does this tie into? I know Forty-Nine.
You know where Gunner Road is? Where, that's the end of Gunner Road and Forty-Nine?
Right.
It will go straight across, uh, Forty-Nine right there.
And then where's it tying in on the other end?
It'll go to Cleary.
And that's a no truck road?
Well, currently.
It's not a road.
That, the, there's a way to get to Cleary, but, but it is a no truck road, the way that gets to Cleary. And it just, you know, goes up through something, but this goes through a lot of available, you know.
Open land, yeah.
Right, to be developed. And that's kinda one reason, Steve, back to that property, well, y'all mentioned buying some maybe of accounting or something, but anyway, it opened it up, you know, that road, you know, opened up for potential development.
Talking about, talking about which, Sid, are you talking about?
Right, well, now I'm talking about by the fish house, the Eagle Post.
Yeah.
Have they developed it?
They've got it cleared and, uh.
Well, I think the biggest holdup, I don't, I may be wrong, but I don't think Florence had, Florence had utilities over there.
Correct.
Yeah. So they may be getting there where they're ready to do that now, I don't know.
Can I, can I help us kinda sum the discussion at this point? So we've got a, uh, the potential, uh, that we could structure a request that relates to our deadfall issue on county public right of way, our safe, road safety issue. We could structure a request there. I would propose, um, that, that when we make our request, that we work very closely with our legislators to, to include language there that provides as much flexibility as possible with that funding so that there is a way for the board to be comfortable, assuming we get it, that the board can be comfortable that it has the authority to utilize those funds in ways that make sense to all five of you guys. We can, we can structure that language so that it has the flexibility to take care of that need and if there are related needs that we're not thinking about right now, that there's flexibility to address that.
I, I like that.
And that way you can.
It's hard for me to vote to build a new road that no one lives on when I have a substantial number of miles of gravel roads that people have lived there for generations. I will vote to do it, but I want everyone to keep in the back of your mind that, uh, where I'm sitting, I mean, and, and our people that say, what about me?
So as, as, uh, as much of this funding that we can get help with, Steve, I think that's what we wanna do. Uh, I, I'm not shy about making sure you guys understand, we like to get help so that the county taxpayers don't have to foot the bill for all of this infrastructure improvement.
Agreed.
And they're telling us they wanna help. So, so far on this particular project, we've done really well. The county taxpayers have contributed three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To Florence Byron Parkway so far, out of six and a half million. And so that's, that's a pretty good investment return, I would say. Right? Um, and so that I would propose that, uh, as it relates to the Florence Byram potential ask, Mr. Rhodes, our new senator, has, he is the one who kind of is the impetus behind that discussion.
He's the one that come, you know, come to me and, you know, wanting.
Right. I, I would suggest that we work with Senator Rhodes on that particular request. That, uh, that we work with the legislators who have raised other questions, what, what can we do to help Rankin County? That we work with them separately on our deadfall issue. And that we allow both of those parties to do what they need to do to see to it that any help that we can get actually comes. Timing wise, we, we need to move, we can't wait on the legislature.
Really not asking our lobbyists to go out and try to get either one of these passed?
They, they will be heavily involved when it comes to the point of the language of the request, Jay.
Okay.
But you guys are the ones who uh, need to be counted on to agree, number one, what the ask is gonna be. I need to communicate that to our team, right? I don't, I don't need them stepping on anything that this board wants to do. You guys need, kinda need to be setting the tone. Are, are those the two things that we wanna ask about? That's kinda where I need to be, I, I need some direction. Are those the two things that we're gonna identify or are there more?
My, my idea is the treat and cleanup is the most acute. If they wanna help us on this Byram, Florence, whatever connection, uh, I'm open.
Well, we've put a lot of work in this stormwater project to, to try to get it where it is now, so I, it'd be foolish, I think, to drop the ball down.
Yeah, I agree.
We're, we're not, there is, it's not before us to discuss changing anything about stormwater. That, that process is underway.
Right.
Uh, and, and at, there, at the appropriate time, we will actually officially present the local and private for that purpose. That's gonna happen.
Well, I know in the past, we've always tried to limit the number of projects we have uh, that we ask our lobbyists to perform.
But they asking us.
I guess if we ask them to do more, as long as we willing to pay them more, they'll do it.
But he, he was coming, you know.
They were coming to us.
And asking, you know.
Right, right.
Whether we get it or not, I don't know, but.
I, I was really talking in terms of our lobbyists.
Oh, okay.
What projects are, in the past, our lobbyists have always asked us, hey, don't overload us because we're not gonna be successful. We need to keep it to one, two, or maybe three things that, you know, realistically that they might could get done.
Which is why we start in July, you understand, we, because all the planning, all the staging, setting of the stage has to be done way before the session starts. So we, we gotta direct our lobbyists to, to be prepared to ask for specific things so they can get themselves together, ready to go. So that was done in July. This is unusual. It's not usual that we get a legislator literally calling and saying, y'all don't need to go an entire session of the legislature without a request.
Well, Craig, we, after the last two years, uh, felt that we would soften up this year because of the amount of help we got over the last two years. However, this past year, the ec- uh, economic infusion that went in in some counties around us that was helped by the legislature.
Yes.
Made me realize we're not asking for enough because, well, anyhow, I'll stop right there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But we've been asking.
I know.
And asking, and asking, and asking, and asking, and asking, and asking, right? Yep.
But.
Somebody, somebody needs to literally flip the switch, no pun intended.
Yep.
So let's talk about timing. We're gonna move forward with our deadfall project regardless whether we get help or not. We're moving forward with that, it's an unbudgeted expense, I hope we get some help, but we're moving forward. Timing, y'all need to understand this, Mike's gonna incur, we're literally going to be in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year before we get any money from the state, if we get it. I want y'all to, to be clear about this. Appropriations from the state legislature that are authorized during a session in twenty-four, if they, if we got an appropriation in twenty-four to help us with deadfall, that would be voted on at some point towards the end of the session. April-ish timeframe this year. We won't see money before late October or early November, I want y'all to understand. So if they help us with our twenty twenty-four deadfall issue, we're not gonna see the help until twenty-five fiscal year.
But if we know it's coming, then we can proceed.
And we're not gonna get it if we don't ask. So let's, you know, I, I, again, I need some direction here. Am I on safe ground to message to our legislative assistants, consultants? Am I on safe ground to tell them, we've got two asks? One is tree deadfall unbudgeted expense. We'd love to have as much as four, five million.
Ask for five.
Ask for five.
It's.
And our Florence Byron Parkway expense associated with grade separation. We'd like to get six million dollars for that. Am I good?
I've got some gravel roads. No.
I'm, I'm good with that.
We wanna, the, the second request, if the board is of a mind to do that, that second one is gonna go through Senator Rhodes.
Yeah.
And, and he's gonna be the horse.
Okay.
And we'll work directly with him to help him and to maneuver how we can.
Well, that second one is really an answer and not a ask.
Yes, sir.
He has asked us about helping us with that.
Okay. What are we doing?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Mr. Bishop.
I'm good.
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
I, I would like it in the form of a motion so that our, our consultants don't feel like they're not a hundred percent sure what we're doing.
I'm like the motion. I'll second the motion.
Alright, um.
And that's the motion to go and speak with the legislators on the deadfall.
Two appropriations requests.
And the other one, um.
Florence Byron.
Grade separation or type of that.
You know, I, I think we just, we just broad, Florence Byron Parkway assistance with funding for the costs associated with Florence Byron Parkway.
Or, or Rankin County road. Alright.
And again, I wanna be clear, i- if you guys uh, intend to speak on this issue, have your conversations with them, but remember that the Florence Byron Parkway is Senator Rhodes, that's a Senator Rhodes project. Part of the method to the madness there is, I want it to be clear to Senator Rhodes that we're not expecting anybody else necessarily to be a part of that, since he brought it forward. I, I wanna, I wanna express that courtesy to him and let him move with that and let him decide what help he thinks he needs. Everybody okay with that? Alright.
Good with that?
Yeah. Alright, I've got a motion.
Second.
Sid made a motion. Second motion on two legislative uh, requests, any other discussion? All in favor, uh, motion passes.
Second item, that's not under additional business for me, Mr. President, is a discussion of our, um, and I'm, I'm bringing this out and my county administrator doesn't even know I'm gonna bring this up, but Vulcan Materials Incorporated is a state contracted vendor that provides, has been providing the county significant rip route type material for our ARPA projects. Uh, and because that's a state contract, uh, we have been utilizing the state contract price for that service. That state contract that the state approved provides for the cost of the material and for the freight or transport of that material, there's an assigned per ton price for that in the state contract. And this company, on top of charging us the state contract price for the material and the delivery, has been adding a fuel surcharge on top of that, which is illegal. Uh, it's been caught and we've gone back and done an analysis to determine how much were we overcharged above the uh, approved state contract price? Uh, the running total at the moment uh, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Who's this?
Vulcan Materials. Uh, they have locations, I think, I think they are an Alabama company, uh, but they have, they have locations inside state Mississippi that they operate from as well. So we have deliveries that are coming from.
Meridian and Paddisburg, Dixburg.
We, we have.
Rip rapp?
Sorry, rip rapp, this is for our ARPA projects. And again, uh, we communicated with the state auditor's office and asked the appropriate questions. Uh, this contract actually was approved through MDOT's procedures and so we also interfaced with MDOT and made them aware of the situation. And both the state auditor's office and MDOT uh, have indicated to us that what Vulcan is doing is totally improper and has to be reviewed and investigated. Um, I put Vulcan on notice about this because uh, when we caught this issue, we went to open invoices that we have with Vulcan and we eliminated the fuel surcharge and sent them payment without the fuel surcharge. They have refused to accept that payment and they have refused to honor our purchase orders. And so I put them on notice uh, that the county is not gonna stand for it. Uh, I've had uh, one Vulcan representative reach out to me yesterday. First I've heard from them after at least two weeks of dead air. Uh, I had a Vulcan representative reach out yesterday, I actually called Keith, I called him back. Uh, and I have requested a meeting with the appropriate Vulcan representatives and representatives of the offices, state auditor, to come together and see if there's a way to resolve this. What I would like for the board to consider doing, if you're willing to do it, and uh, is to add to the agenda authorization for the filing of appropriate, an appropriate lawsuit in Rankin County to collect these overpayments. Um, I don't, I hope that I don't need that authorization, but I'd like to go ahead and have it in the event that it becomes clear that that's the only way we're gonna get our money back. So I would ask for a, a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'm making a motion to add this to the agenda.
Second.
Alright, um, Brad makes a motion to add, uh, or, yeah, to add the filing of a lawsuit in Rankin County.
If necessary.
If necessary. Uh, it's against this Vulcan materials, it has to do with uh, exile or fuel attacks. And Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion, all in favor? Or it's added now then?
I'm making a motion to revert.
Alright, Brad makes a motion to approve the same uh, thing and who, who will say? Scott seconded it. Any other discussion, all in favor? Motion passes.
You would figure they'd handle all this, going through a lawsuit.
You, you would hope.
I'm about a hundred and twenty-five thousand up right now, before we go.
And they still hauling, aren't they?
No, he said they're not, I don't know.
They, they haven't hauled Rankin County on a currently open PO unless it's happened in the last few days. No, I, I think, Steve, that, that uh, the issue for, for Mr. Vulcan Materials is much, much more broad than just Rankin County. It's a state contract.
Yep.
And so I, I asked Mr. MDOT, how many POs has Vulcan been issued by MDOT? That MDOT's paid a fuel surcharge on or by any other county or city in the state of Mississippi? And has billed for a fuel surcharge inappropriately? So it may be significantly more than just what they owe Rankin County.
I got you.
Alright, do we have a need to go into an executive session? Alright, somebody wanna?
Personnel, I'm making a motion to go in uh, executive session for personnel.
Alright, Brad makes a motion, Scott seconded that motion, all in favor. Motion passes now then.
I'm making a motion.
To be in the executive session. For personnel.
Second.
And Scott seconded that motion, all in favor. Motion passes, we're in executive.